Recording in progress.
Okay. Exactly, that's right, that's right. I have a hard time sometimes with those guys down there because you can't see it. I did. Not him. Nope. All right, it's five in the nose, everybody ready? Good evening, I'll call the special meeting of the Federal Way City Council for February 4th, 2025 to order, would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, we have a South Lake Connection Mobility Project, King County Metro presentation. First, we'll start off with Rick Perez, our traffic engineer with the city of Federal Way, Rick?
Well, good evening, yes, for the records, Rick Perez, city traffic engineer, and Metro, King County Metro has been working with city staff in developing transit service revisions in response to sound transit's extension of Link Light Rail to Federal Way, which is currently planned to begin in 2026. Metro's staff had planned to be here in person tonight, but due to weather and other concerns, they will be presenting online tonight. Nonetheless, they will be describing proposed changes that would improve both coverage and spans of service within Federal Way, and also describing the process used to develop this proposal. And not seeing them logging in yet, so I apologize.
We're here.
Oh, we're here, okay, great. So if you want to share the screen, let's see, I believe you do have rights to do that.
We're working on it.
Oh, there we go, great. So with that, I'll hand over the presentation to Amanda Pleasant Brown for the presentation, thank you.
Thank you so much, Rick, really appreciate the introductions. Hello, mayor and council members, my name is Amanda Pleasant Brown, I use she, her, pronouns, and I'm the government relations jurisdictional lead, and as Rick mentioned, we're here to talk with you about the South Lake Connections project that restructures the bus network around the new Federal Way Link extension. We look forward to talking with you tonight, please let us know if you have questions, and I will say, there's some nuance and there's some dense information, so please don't hesitate to ask us if you have that again, and so I'll pass it to my colleagues to introduce themselves, and then we'll start the presentation. I'll hand it over to Nicole first.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for inviting us here to talk about South Lake Connections, my name is Nicole Agiri, I'm a transportation planner in the service planning group at Metro and the project manager for South Lake Connections. I'll pass it over to Christina.
Hello, everyone, Christina Gonzalez, I use she, her, ella pronouns, I'm a senior community engagement planner with King County Metro, and looking forward to sharing with you a little bit about our community engagement for this project. Pass it to Genevieve.
Hello, my name is Genevieve Jones, she, her, I support Amanda Pleasant Brown in the local jurisdictions work, and I'll pass it back to her. Nicole, how about you kick us off?
Sure, thanks, everyone, as the intro stated, we're here to talk about South Lake Connections, and today's presentation, we're really excited to share information about what's included in our Phase Two Network, which is our first round of proposals, and how we're meeting our prioritized mobility needs, and share with you all what we currently are doing for our public engagement efforts as we share these initial concepts with the public between now and the end of February. So to start us off, South Lake Connections is a service redesign project in South King County that will restructure Metro service with the Federal Way Link extension. As early as 2026, Sound Transit will be extending the Link Light Rail One Line from Angle Lake down to Federal Way, and this extension includes three new stations at Kent Des Moines, Star Lake, and Federal Way Downtown. So recognizing that the Federal Way Link extension brings a really big transit investment to South King County, our project will restructure Metro service in the project area to best integrate with this new high-capacity transit investment. As part of the South Lake Connections project, Metro is evaluating changes to 22 routes, and these are routes that were chosen to be part of our scope because of their proximity to a future light rail station, or because they provide service into Seattle that could be considered duplicative of light rail once it extends to Federal Way. And because of the location of the Federal Way Downtown Station, all Metro routes within the city of Federal Way are part of our project scope. In terms of our project timeline, we are conducting three phases of engagement, which allows us to have an iterative design of the network that builds off of continuous feedback from the community, and we started our public engagement efforts in spring of 2024, where we really focused on educating the community about the project, identifying prioritized mobility needs in the study area, and recruiting for our mobility board, which is our community member advisory board, and our partner review board, which is comprised of staff from jurisdictions, institutions, major employers, and community-based organizations, and we work with those two groups collaboratively throughout the entire project. All jurisdictions were invited to staff our partner review board, and together the mobility board and partner review board help shape our project priorities and design concepts, which are reflected in our Phase Two Network. So those needs that we heard in that first phase in spring of last year have guided our project team in developing the draft changes to the network, which we are currently sharing with the public through the end of February. What we hear in this Phase Two engagement will help us further refine those initial concepts, formalizing them into proposed changes to be shared again with the public during Phase Three to collect additional feedback, and we hope to return to this venue during Phase Three in the summer of 2025 to be able to share our updated changes. After that, we will work to finalize proposed changes and submit them to the King County Council for adoption around the spring of 2026, and then planning to start implementing our restructure starting in the fall of 2026. This next slide has a lot of information on all of the things that we consider when designing changes to our service, so I'll kind of go over this at a high level. Starting over on the left, we have our data and analysis, which is really understanding how people are traveling, where they want to go, where our priority populations live, and how our current services are performing. Over, I'm going to jump over to the right, over on the right, we have our capital considerations, so making sure that whatever we propose is actually operationally feasible. It can be pretty easy to draw a line on the map, but can a bus actually operate on these streets and make these turns? Is there space for operators to take a break at the end of the route and use the restroom? And then this middle category of community input is all about using the findings of that Phase One engagement in our previous research to really understand priority mobility needs and important connections and destinations in our project area. All of that input helped us, and working with the partner review board and mobility board, helped us come up with five prioritized mobility needs within our project area, and over these next two slides, I'll be walking through how we're meeting those five prioritized mobility needs with our Phase Two proposal. And so on these slides, you'll see on the left-hand side of the table, we have the mobility need, and then what is in the Phase Two concept that meets that need. I'll be going over this at a pretty high level, and then I'll be speaking specifically to impacts to Federal Way. So the first mobility need is greater transit coverage, so to meet that, we are implementing two new Metro Flex pilot zones, one in Federal Way and one in Auburn. These zones will increase the number of people with access to transit and provide connections to major transit hubs. The next is improved early morning and nighttime service, and we're providing earlier and/or later trips on seven routes within our project area. The third is faster travel times, both within and beyond the project area, so we'll be reorienting routes to serve these link stations and feed into that spine of the network. We're also adding new frequent services and having trips come more often on local routes. We're also hoping to improve travel time and directness between West Federal Way and Downtown Federal Way by revising the structure of our network between those two destinations. Our fourth prioritized mobility need is improved east-west connections, and we're adding frequent service on two main east-west corridors as part of our network. And then the last but certainly not least is increased weekend service, especially on Saturdays. So there are two routes in our project area where we are adding brand-new service where it currently doesn't exist today, and we're also proposing that routes come more often earlier and later in the day on weekends. In total, we are proposing 35% more trips on Saturday and 75% more trips on Sunday compared to our service on the ground today. And then lastly, as kind of a customer service aide, we are hoping to match service on Saturdays and Sundays, to be able to provide folks a consistent weekend experience and hopefully make our system easier to use. In order to implement these improvements in the South Lake Connections network, it does mean that there are trade-offs to be made. The Phase Two Network does propose the removal of 10 peak-only routes to be able to reinvest those resources into the improvements that I just spoke about, and really improving and focusing on the local all-day network. Of the 10 peak-only routes that are proposed for removal, it is important to note that nine are currently suspended and are not operating, so riders cannot use them. The only peak-only route that is currently operating today that is proposed for removal is the Route 177, and that's because its pathway is largely duplicative of what Link Light Rail would do once it extends down to Federal Way. There are also other reductions proposed for unproductive and lower ridership services to be able to use those resources to invest in prioritized mobility needs. In Federal Way specifically, this includes the replacement of Dart Route 901 with a fixed route service, the new 186, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. So now focusing specifically on impacts to Federal Way, there are five major shifts that we're seeing in service in Federal Way with the Phase Two Network. The first is creating new connections to Link Light Rail, so actually in the spring 2025 service change in a couple of months, all routes at the current Federal Way Transit Center will be reoriented to the Federal Way Downtown Station, so those connections are actually coming online a little bit earlier and will be ready for folks to use once light rail opens. The second is new coverage within Federal Way, so we're proposing the reorientation of Route 182 from its pathway in northeast Tacoma to reorient it to serves 21st Avenue Southwest, south of Twin Lakes Park and Ride, to provide more coverage within the city of Federal Way, and we're also proposing a new Metro Flex Pilot Zone. The third major shift is improvement in service levels. We are proposing that the Route 181 is upgraded to a frequent service. We are also proposing new Sunday service on the Route 183 where it currently doesn't exist today, and then trips coming often earlier and/or later on five routes within Federal Way, the 181, the 182, 183, 187, and the 903. The fourth major shift is that there are new ways to travel between West Federal Way and Downtown Federal Way, then improve travel time and directness. And so as I mentioned earlier, the new Route 186 would partially replace the one-way service that Dart Route 901 provides, as well as portions of Route 187 with service that operates in both directions. So we're hoping that this will provide more flexibility and allow people to be able to travel a lot faster between West Federal Way and Downtown Federal Way. And then the fifth major shift is a restructure of peak-only services, as I mentioned, the removal of a couple of peak-only routes, including the Route 177, which is the only one that is currently operating today. We're also proposing that the Route 193 starts and ends at Federal Way Downtown Station. Today, it starts and ends at the South 320th Park and Ride, and we just saw an opportunity to shorten that route a little bit to find some cost savings and reinvest that elsewhere. On this slide, we have the before and after, so on the left, we have our current service network in Federal Way, and then on the right, we have the Phase Two proposal. So a couple of things that I want to highlight is, again, the proposed replacement of Dart Route 901 with fixed route service that operates in both ways with the Route 186. Currently, today, the Route 901 just operates in one direction, and so folks that, you know, are getting on over here kind of need to ride all the way around to be able to get to Federal Way Transit Center, which is where we find most folks are trying to go. So we're hopeful that with the two-way service on Route 186, those folks will still be able to make that travel a lot faster and be able to meet their trip needs. With the, with the new Route 186, you'll see that there are some portions of the 901 that aren't covered with that new route, but between the Route 186 and the new Metro Flex Zone, we're actually maintaining coverage for 94% of boardings on Route 901. So the large majority of riders on 901 will still have service with our proposed network. I also do want to highlight the revision to the Route 182 that I spoke about, having it go north on 21st Avenue South and truncating at the Twin Lakes Park and Ride provides more coverage within the city of Federal Way. You can see with the boldness on the Route 181 that we're proposing that this is upgraded to frequent service because we know that that's an important east-west connection. And then lastly, I do want to highlight this new Metro Flex Pilot Zone, kind of on the eastern end of Federal Way, that provides brand-new coverage for folks that don't have any transit access today. So we're hoping that this is a good use of this zone to be able to provide transit service to folks that currently don't have any coverage today. With that, I will pass it on to Christina to talk a little bit about our Phase Two engagement.
Thank you, Nicole, that was a lot to take in, but they are hopefully lots of really great improvements that is going to increase the use of transportation to the residents of Federal Way. So in terms of engagement, we have a survey and a website, we want to see if these changes are helpful for residents in our project area, so definitely want to know, are these changes helpful for the residents of Federal Way? All, both our survey, our website, and flyers and other materials are available in 15 languages, 15 languages, including Amharic, Arabic, Chinese, both simplified and traditional, Dari, of course, in English, French, Korean, Russian, Somali, Spanish, Tagalog, Tagrenya, Ukrainian, and Vietnamese. We are in, all over the place in Federal Way, and we shared information in 22 different key community areas and businesses to let people know of the changes and get their feedback. We are also in transit centers, we're working with several community-based organizations throughout the county and some in Federal Way to really try to make sure that we are sharing the information with communities that may need an additional and more culturally specific and culturally relevant way to share the information. And as Nicole shared earlier, with our mobility board and partner review board, we have multiple folks from Federal Way that either work, live, or travel frequently in Federal Way as part of our mobility board, and appreciate Rick and team participating in our partner review board, and we have one more open house that I think is the next slide, yes, so our last open house or public information session is this next Monday, February 10th, in the evening, next slide. And as I mentioned, our community-based organizations, so we're actually working with several community-based organizations to get the word out, but we are, we have direct partnerships with the organizations here on the slide, as you can see, including specifically in Federal Way, working with the Federal Way Black Collective, wanting to make sure that we are sharing information in as many ways as possible to outreach to our communities that use transit. And the next slide is for Amanda.
So, thank you so much for, again, for having us today, there's things that you can do as well, so we would, you know, really love for you to push out the information regarding the survey that is available in the 15 languages so that we can really get the community feedback. We make changes based off of what people say, we make changes based off of our engagement with your staff, they're the ones letting us know about your priorities and how we can best serve the riders of Federal Way and throughout King County. So please share the survey, please share the next open house that we have available, we have a social media toolkit you also have access to, which has graphics and other languages, please, you know, your staff has been excellent to work with, so their continued participation on the partner review board is appreciated and necessary, so thank you so much for that. And then, we're always here for you, so it's my job and Genevieve's job to help support jurisdictions and any problems that are coming up, but certainly with this one. So if you ever need to get ahold of us, please don't hesitate to reach out. And with that, we're ready for questions.
All right, thank you, council, any questions? Councilmember Seth Edson, oh, councilmember?
You got us first.
Oh, whatever.
Okay.
Hey, thank you guys for the presentation, I've got a couple of questions for you, the first one is, is what kind of turnout have you seen in the first two surveys you guys provided? Open houses, I guess.
Okay, so surveys and open houses are two separate things, so with surveys, we usually have, I think, close to 2,000 participants directly in the survey. For a Phase One engagement, we also created what we're calling a mini survey, as we recognize that sometimes formal surveys, some of our communities, that's not really a great form of communication and to gather feedback, and so we host interviews, and then as we were reaching out to folks, we did a mini survey of bus stops, and with our information sessions, we, we tend to rely more on community organizations that are doing information sessions. This next one, we have close to 20 people that have registered. Our first one, we try to diversify our time, as we know, folks have different, like, work schedules, and we have recordings of our sessions and in multiple languages for people maybe that can't access the videos, and then we share those in social media.
So like when you guys did the January 7th and the January 25th, did you guys work with one of the local community-based organizations then?
For our information sessions, those are, the general for us is our metro team that coordinates, but our community-based organizations are working in community, doing presentations and sharing information in a way that's, that is culturally relevant to their organization and how they tend to do community engagement, and then usually they invite us to be present when they're sharing information.
Got you, so these open houses, are those the informational ones you're talking about then?
Yeah, so these are the ones that are sponsored by King County Metro that are generic, you know, we're, they're in English, and then we provide interpretation or any other access services that's needed, and then other organizations focus on sharing that information in whichever way makes the most sense to the way that they're engaging with their communities.
Gotcha. Now, you said that those are recorded for people to then be able to look at in their leisure, is that correct?
Our, our general metro information sessions, yes, they should be online, if you go to southlinkconnections.com, and we should have the sessions online in English and Spanish, and I'm forgetting off the top of my head, I think there were also three other languages, and so they're available online, very easy to be able to share.
All right, and then my, I have two other questions, now what is the number one request you guys get from the surveys and feedback, what is the main thing that people are asking for?
Well, we've worked with our mobility board to identify our priorities since that is, you know, people want more coverage, we often hear a lot that people want, like, be able to travel within city, a lot of east-west connections, since a lot of focus has historically been getting to downtown, and so that tends to be the feedback that we get, and then specifically with surveys, people really just want to know based on the transportation that they take. So if they take the A-line, they want to know, how is that being impacted? And then we get feedback in that way, and I'll open it up to my team, wants to share any other information?
Yeah, we get a wide range of feedback, because everybody has different transit needs, and it's really hard to meet everybody's needs, and so to help focus our, our service redesign, we really wanted to focus on five key themes, and we worked with the mobility board and partner review board to figure out what those are, and recognizing that, you know, these aren't the only priorities within the community, it may not be the top priorities for every single person taking transit, but to really guide our concept development, we have five, and those are greater transit coverage, better early morning and late-night service, being able to travel faster to and from your destinations, east-west connections, and weekend service.
Gotcha, and then my last question is kind of that early-later, and then the 35 increase on Saturday, the 75% increase on Sunday, 75 seems like a lot of an increase, what was the original amount of transportation or availability on Sunday before this 75% increase goes into effect?
I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but I can grab them and we can pass them on. It is a really big increase on Sunday service that's attributed to two routes having brand-new Sunday service, so the 183, which does through Federal Way, and then the 631 of Emburian, and as well as, a lot of our service right now on Sundays is 60-minute service, and so promoting that to 30-minute service doubles the amount of trips on it, and so that's kind of some of the contributing factors to that big increase on Sunday, but we can get you those specific numbers.
So, so when the 75% would take into consideration, like you said, if you went from 90 to 60 minutes, or a change of how often that bus is actually running, okay, that makes a lot of sense. All right, well, that's all I have, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, mayor, and thank you for the presentation. As someone who used to take, use Metro a lot, I don't do that anymore longer, but I still appreciate, and I, for some reason, have an obsession, so a lot of the stuff you're saying does make sense, and I really appreciate the changes that you're bringing and the increase in services, and also the, some of the routing that you've done. I also appreciate that the east-west connection is going to be increased, because I know there's been a challenge there. I remember when light rail went through down MLK, I believe it was Route 42 that was removed, and I do know it impacted people because, one, the fee for sound transit for the light rail was higher than the metro, and also the stops are so far and frequent that, I mean, far apart, that it was very challenging for people, and I know it still is a problem, but people adjust, so although I don't want that to be the case, I think you're operating based on what you know or what you have, and I feel like this, these changes are actually, I like the increases, and I like what you're doing, because even when A-line came down Highway 99, I remember, and it's still, you know, the stops are also, again, far apart, and I believe it was 179 or 174 going that way where it stopped, you know, and I lived on that street, by the way, so I know it impacted me at the time because I did use the bus. 182, I do like the change that you talked about, because the park and ride, going to the park and ride is great because people can take advantage of it there, and the increase on Sundays is great. My question for you is, I've noticed that 177 and 178, I do drop someone off at the transit center, they come every maybe five minutes or less, but they're always full and packed, but I think I heard you say 177 is going to be removed, correct?
Yes.
So how is that gonna fit the needs of the commuters that use it very, very much in the morning?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so that's one question.
And that's a great question, we know that that is a really big travel market for commuters. The 177 provides five trips in the morning and four trips in the PMP. The 177 provides five trips in the morning and four trips in the PMP because I wouldn't necessarily say that that specific route is kind of the workforce for commuters. I believe in the fall service change, we had about 150 boardings in both, inclusive of both directions each day, which is not nothing. But we also recognize that folks use that service along with the sound trans, Route 577 and 578, for folks traveling between Federalway Transit Center and downtown Seattle. They can kind of just hop on whichever one comes first because they all kind of need the same need. And so we are trying to work really closely with Sound Transit, knowing that this is an important connection to understand what they plan to do in the I-5 corridor. We just know that we already only provide limited trips with five in the morning and four in the afternoon. And so we really need to hear from them what their plans are, and we're trying to work as closely as we can to figure out how to meet needs in that corridor.
Okay, thank you. So buses are going to be rerouted to the downtown center once it's finalized and not at Transit Center? So why is that change happening? Is it because of where the train stops in alignment to that? Okay, so what happens with Transit Center?
Sound Transit would be able to speak to this more, but my knowledge of it is because of the location of the Federalway Downtown Station, they're creating basically new bus space closer to there so that folks can kind of get on and off the bus and get right to the light rail station. And I believe that their plans include, the reason why we're making this shift in spring of 2025 is because we are, or Sound Transit is then going to demo the current bus island at Federalway Transit Center and construct a new roadway there. But we can definitely connect you to someone who can speak more thoroughly to their plans. But that's the knowledge that I have.
So people still park in the garage and walk to that location?
That's correct.
So what's the, what kind of accommodation is there for people with disability who cannot walk that distance?
I mean, I will, again, direct you to Sound Transit on that. I do hope that that is part of kind of their overall station design because we know that that's a priority. We know that Sound Transit also knows that that's a priority, but we can help get you more details on what that experience would look like.
Thank you. And one more, fees. Metro is always, you know, not as expensive as Sound Transit. So what is going to happen there? Are they going to kind of somehow make them the same or would it remain?
Yes, Sound Transit has voted to make their flat fare for $3, and Metro has harmonized, so we're going to be the same price now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course.
So you're eliminating 177. What replaces? So you're relying on Sound Transit's 577 to replace the 177 in the morning? Is it just for a few routes or for the whole thing? Is there no longer going to be a 177 coming to Federalway?
That's correct. That is what we're currently proposing. We're hoping that Link Light Rail will be able to provide that all-day connection, all day, all week, whereas the 177, we recognize, is catered to a very specific trip need. And so we do consider that to potentially be duplicative service, and so we are proposing the removal there. I mentioned the 577 and the 578 simply because those routes do provide kind of that two-way all-day service in the I-5 corridor between Seattle and Federalway. And so we are anxiously waiting to see what Sound Transit might possibly do with those services.
Well, as a person who used to ride the 177 every day and use the Sound Transit as a backup, the problem perennially with the Sound Transit is it'd be standing room only in the afternoon and in the morning as well. So do you have a 178 available? What, you don't have any replacement for 177 for business commuters to the downtown?
Not in our proposed network. The thought was that folks could potentially take Link and, of course, see what Sound Transit could be providing because we don't know.
Link's not going to be in place for a year.
Oh, no. We wouldn't propose that removal until Link is operational. So Link will come on first, and then we will implement our restructure. So the 177 isn't going anywhere until there is an alternative available. Apologies if I have.
That's fine. I just, I remember having to come home from the King County Courthouse many times, having to stand up on a Sound Transit bus. And I would usually ride Metro for the one and only reason that there was capacity. So that's concerning. Councilmember Walsh?
Yeah, I'm really not that familiar with the whole system and stuff. A couple of times you mentioned Metro Flex. Probably everybody else here knows what it is, but there may be some people watching on TV that don't, and I don't. What is Metro Flex?
That is a great question. I apologize for skipping over that in my presentation. Metro Flex is a service that Metro provides because we recognize that sometimes a 40, 60-foot bus is not always the best way to connect people to transit. It cannot always do all of the things. And so Metro Flex is what we call a flexible service. So there's a service area, and within that area, folks can either call or use an app to request a ride and be picked up and dropped off anywhere within that same service area, which is why we typically have these around, or typically able to provide connections to transit hubs so that folks can access the rest of the network. And they're typically in areas of maybe some lower density where maybe a fixed route bus doesn't make the most sense.
Is that similar to Dart?
No, Dart is a little bit different because Dart does have a fixed route, and then it kind of has some areas where it can deviate. I would say that Metro Flex is a little bit more flexible because I think with Dart, you need to call and request a ride a certain amount of hours ahead in advance, and there can only be a certain number of deviations on each trip. And so Metro Flex tends to be a little bit easier, a little bit more flexible for folks to use.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Dovey?
Yeah. How many people in Federalway ride the bus? Do you know?
I can grab that number and share that. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. I was just curious. And around the country, I work with a lot of transportation departments around the U.S., and they call Metro Flex like last mile. I mean, assuming we're talking the same thing, right? So how many last-mile Metro Flex vehicles will be in Federalway? Because not everybody can get to these bus routes, and if we're going to move people to the bus, to the transit center, you know, how far is the average walk to a center? Have you looked at that? And how many vehicles will actually be available for people to get on demand?
Yes, the Metro Flex vehicles, the way that, so these are operated through a contractor, so we have a vendor that does this for us, and it is meant to be demand-responsive. And so the number of vehicles that they deploy kind of depends on the amount of demand that they typically see. We typically hope to be able to pick folks up between, I think, 15 or 20 minutes. And so this is why this typically works in kind of areas of lower density because otherwise the demand kind of balloons, and then it's more vehicles than we can actually deploy. I would say for the size that we're looking at, I would probably estimate about like two vehicles would probably be assigned. But again, it's really just responsive to the demand.
Okay, but two or four, whatever the number is, and you have 100,000 people, and the goal is to have more people ride on fixed route and ride the buses and get to transit and go. If the demand picks up, how fast do you react to that? And how many vehicles could there be? I mean, it's budget, but the whole plan is to get people to use the mass transit. How do you, is there a restriction if all of a sudden you needed 40 down here? If everybody wanted to use it?
Yeah. It's a really good question. I would need to kind of speak to our Metro Flex team here at Metro to understand a little bit more some of those nuances. We do modeling when we draft up these different zones when we're considering what these could look like. And our model does tell us how many people they think would actually be taking transit or requesting this and how many vehicles we need. And so we do take that modeling into account when we're drawing the shape of the zone. And so I don't think we would, I don't think in any of our current Metro Flex zones, we've seen the need balloon quite that much, but it is a good question of what would happen in that instance. So we can definitely follow up on information about that.
Because if you're saying it takes 15 minutes, you can touch four people an hour. And you got two, so we're talking about eight people an hour maybe in Federalway if they need to get to the bus line. Anyway, just curious how you do that. Thank you.
All right. Councilor Honda?
Thank you. Thanks. It's good to see you guys. On the park-and-ride on 21st Avenue, it's, right now, it's barricaded off. There's only a small area you can park in. Will that be opened up so that more people can use it in the spring of '26?
Yes, we have our connecting to transit team that evaluates kind of the usage and utility of our park-and-rides. And so we definitely would expect them to open up as demand increases at that park-and-ride. And we keep them apprised of what our plans are so that they know what the future service profile at these different locations are and can respond.
And for Metro Flex, so we have the unincorporated King County area around Five Mile Lake and down by Peaceley Canyon. Will there be the ability to have some kind of, the ability for those people who live in that area to use a Metro Flex to get to the train station?
I will need to kind of orient myself on a map to where that location is. Any change to the size of our current zone does have cost implications, and if our estimates say that we need another vehicle, that's a significant cost jump. But we can definitely take that feedback into consideration and look at ways that we might be able to make small adjustments to our proposed zone.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Council, any other questions? All right, council. All right, thank you very much. I appreciate your presentation. Rick Perez, do you have anything else to round us out with?
No, that about sums it up.
All right. Representative, thank you very much from representatives from King County Metro. That is Nicole Aguirre, Christina Gonzalez, Amanda Pleasant Brown, Genevieve Jones. Thank you all very much for your participation this evening.
Thank you so much for your time, and we'll give you those follow-ups soon.
Very good. Thank you very much. We are going to be in recess for purposes and executive session that will last approximately, Ryan, how long? In the duration anticipated, 20 minutes. Collective bargaining pursuant to RCW 42301404B and Item B, property acquisition pursuant to RCW 42301101B. We're in recess for that purpose.